2018, it's a regular meeting and I'm going to call the meeting to order at seven o'clock in the evening. Plaid allegiance.
The flag.
Plaid allegiance.
The flag.
The United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you and good evening. I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda as written. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
And any discussion?
Well, I would like to add a, at the end of the agenda, a period of discussion in the executive session. However, Ms. Link has an urgent mission. Would like to be someplace else, so.
It's okay. We can see how the night goes.
Okay. All right, then.
Move quickly, perhaps we can find time. We can add that at the end.
Okay.
Without any problem at all.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We've got minutes from July 18, 2018. I've looked them over and they look okay to me. Any corrections or I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, July 18, 2018. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
Nope.
All set, Sue?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondence. We've got a couple of pieces here. Quite interesting. And this one is from Erin Devero. And it's, "Good morning Linda and Emmett and Rob. I wanted to forward my sincerest thanks to your road crew. I had called the town earlier this year regarding our road that was washing away severely after each storm. It got so bad it started eating away at the canopy in our driveway and our neighbors as well. Last week the holes were so large you could see all the layers of the road from the work over the years and could fit half a tire deep in them. Guys were out here yesterday fixing the problem. Even they said, 'Whoa, those are some big holes.' They were so nice, so efficient, did a fantastic job. I forgot what it was like to just drive in and out of the driveway. I realize the town has more than its share of severe weather and damage in the past few years. Our crews are working hard to address whatever they can. It's been months since I called and I assumed it was probably overlooked and considered not important enough. I had a note to call the town again about this month, about it this month, and then of course woke up to see the crew out there working. What makes the whole scenario even better is I felt like my issue had been listened to months ago even though the circumstances, weather and town needs, may have prevented it from being physically addressed immediately. I wanted to assure, assume that when weather permitted and the issue was reached and the town's listers would be taken care of by admit I thought negatively at this point in the year. I learned from my lesson about being patient and learned that you guys are working with us and that alone was really made me even more proud to call this town my home. Please forward my thanks to the guys for their hard work. It's not fun working this heat but the efforts do not go unnoticed and it's very appreciated. Happy Thursday, Erin Devero." Nice little pat in the back for our guys and they don't get near enough. Got another one here. This is from Chris Charlin in connection with our town officers. He said, "I want to take a few minutes to let you personally know that some of the fine work done recently by two of our town officers. July 23, 2018, two of your officers, Officer Carl Kabanikoff KC-69 and Officer Russell Gingras KC-77 responded to a well-being check at an address." We're not going to give that. "While there, they looked beyond the primary reason for being there and took it upon themselves to make some fantastic observations. They were able to detect the strong and overwhelming odor of marijuana that a trained police officer would know is more than just a small quantity. They believed through their training experience that it was a marijuana grow inside the residence. They were able to handle the well-being check first and made sure the children were safe." Then Officer Gingras, with the assistance of Trooper Richmond, was able to obtain a search and seizure warrant for the residence. While they secured their search warrant, Officer Kabanikoff secured the residence and the suspect. Once the warrant was signed and with the assistance of the statewide narcotics, I think it's task, but it says East Office, they entered the residence and discovered a large marijuana grow in the basement. Located within the basement was a full-blown grow with grow lights, fans and an exhaust system. 130 to 140 marijuana plants in various stages of growth. I tell you this because I'm impressed that these officers took the time to look beyond the reason of their original call, made personal observations that may have been missed by others. I commend them for their dedication and commitment to public safety and to that of the town of East Haddam. Thank you for your time. Please let me know if you have any questions. Respectfully, Lieutenant C.S. Charlin." And this is the commanding officer, Connecticut State Police, True K, writing the letter. Our guys did a real good job and stopped something that was way out of line. And we have one final letter here and this is to Mr. Michael Ilzaki, head grounds maintainer, Town of East Haddam. Dear Mike, please let this letter serve as a formal thank you for all of your efforts completing the Heritage Park Walking Trail lighting project. This completed installation marks the end of an extensive development involving planning, community involvement and generous donations. You and your part-time staff undertook all the installation responsibility, which was a considerable savings to the town. You helped mark the light locations, utilized equipment from Public Works to dig and prepare the bases, repaired the bollard mounting plates, supervised the concrete pour, ensured proper fixture levels during the cure and cleaned the site after completion. The result was an attractive and professional-looking lighting system that will provide safe and extended use of the Heritage Park Walking Trail. Your ability and enthusiasm continue to make me grateful for your part of the East Haddam team. Great job. Sincerely, Ron Turner, Director of Operations." And I echo that and I'm sure we all do. And the bollard lights up there are going to be a tremendous asset for people, especially with the fall coming. Okay. And I've got my report and first of all, I'm going to start out with a letter from Kirma. And that's our insurance source for much of the town. And it's, "Dear First Select and Lineman, Kirma's Board of Directors and Staff, thank you for your continued membership in Kirma. Your loyalty and the collective risk management efforts of our members are a sustaining force behind Kirma's outstanding financial strength, growth and service programs and your ability, our ability to deliver value-added products and services such as our members' equity distribution program. Kirma stands as one of the most successful statewide collaborative efforts between Connecticut municipalities, schools and local public agencies. As a member-owned and governed organization, our mission is to help our members build stronger, better communities to live, learn and work in. We're pleased to present you with your members' equity distribution check for $23,735. This is an unrestricted distribution. As such, you determine how and when to use these funds. Kirma began its member equity distribution program in 2011 and since then has distributed a total of nearly $25 million to its members. We look forward to working with you again this year. Please visit our website, kirma.org, to learn about our new services, upcoming education programs and special events. If you have any questions regarding this distribution, contact your Kirma underwriter. He gives the phone number and it's Dave Demcek, President Chief Executive Officer, and Barbara Henry, Chairman of Kirma Board of Directors." Nice check there. Nice sum, way to get back. And that's basically because of good experience, because people are paying attention and doing the job right.
Is that in our budget?
I'm sorry?
Do they account for that in our budget?
We don't predict this in the budget at all. I mean.
Okay, so we'll track what we do with that money?
Well, we get to do what we want with it. It's going to go into one of our accounts and work from there.
Okay. I'll talk to Cindy later.
I think the question is, it'd be nice to find out exactly where it's spent or utilized.
I can't predict that at this point.
Just don't get the miscellaneous revenue.
Right. Which, then, right.
Yeah.
So I would hope that's an amount that comes back to the town, gets put it back into our funds for capital use at the end of the year and doesn't get spent per se. Just saying.
Yeah. We'll see how it goes on that. Just responses to previous meeting. I only have one question. That was yours, Rob. And you were asking about the police boat and the funding for it and what happened. What we discovered upon looking at it was that police boat scheduling fund.
Had to do with staffing and that there being a lack of money.
Yeah, it had to do with staffing and it's more than just the boat. But basically, we appeared to run out of money for the latter portion of the last fiscal year. The truth is that when we have special duty assignments, we charge for that. We pay for the time that's used by the police for those special duty assignments out of our regular budget. Monies that come in have been going into a separate account and they actually considerably exceed what we're paying them. And what we realized is that it's not really showing a true picture. And Cindy is reorganizing it and going to set up the funds differently so that the monies for those special duties will come out of that fund where the monies go. And that way we'll have a balance. We anticipate about close to $20 an hour, probably a little bit less, for each hour special duty that actually comes to the town. In the end, we anticipate a considerable amount. This past year's been very good, which is one of the reasons it looks so bad.
But do we actually have a schedule for the boat?
Special duty just.
Not special duty. Forget special duty. I understand that. We get paid for it. It's a separate fund. I'm talking about, do we have a schedule for the boat?
When the police boat is patrolling the lakes and.
The schedule?
For the weekends and it depends on what's going on and what's happening.
So there's a schedule in a budget? There's a budget for, is there a budget specifically for the boat?
It's part of the.
Police boat use?
It's part of the police payroll, the regular police. But this is where we got followed up because it looked like we were running over and we really weren't. We had all this money going to a separate account and we were running out of money apparently sooner than we actually were. I don't know how to describe that.
So I guess I'm just asking, is there an actual schedule for the police duty on the boat or is it?
Maybe there could be a line item for that so that you can keep track of it.
Well, actually that's what's going to happen.
What she's doing?
We're going to reorganize this so we do see that and so it doesn't have this apparent impact on our payroll, our funding. And that will be in the next cycle. We're going to do that and make sure it's done right. But the anticipated returns, and it's considerable, the intent now is to put it towards vehicle purchases for the future, police vehicles. So when we make an excess over and above what we're paying out in salaries, that's going to be set aside against the.
But we actually have a revenue line item for that. That's already in our budget. We estimate a special duty revenue already.
Yeah. But the way we've been entering it into the system has left us with what looks like a deficit, but it's not really because the money is parked elsewhere.
I don't think that was the original question, but we can, it's fine. I think we're past, I think.
It's been looked at. It's going to be reorganized and it's going to be clearly accounted for in the future. And we are not losing money and we're actually coming out ahead of the game.
So I don't think we ever thought we were losing money.
No, that wasn't, I mean, no, you're absolutely right. The question was, why wasn't there money available and why would they be taking it out of the special use for this should be, and I'm hoping that's going to be the case now, that there'll be a line item stating there's so much money in here for boating patrol through the.
The appearance was that our funding for payroll, we had run out of money.
Oh, so that part, okay.
Because the monies were being parked, being used to pay off the special duty.
And they were not being re.
And they weren't being redeposited with the monies that were being paid.
Okay.
In the future, that's going to be dealt with.
Took us a while, but we got there.
Okay, I'm sorry. It's confusing enough as it stands. Moving on from there, our testing on the town property for environmental purposes that Eagle's doing, some of the results are back now. They're looking pretty good. They're better than we had anticipated. There's still work to be done, particularly with the soils away from the buildings. The buildings are pretty well wrapped up. So we're waiting to see a final report on that.
Do we have an estimated time? I mean.
Should be any day now.
Okay.
And I'm a little surprised we haven't already seen it. The bone mill project for the bridge down there on Hungerford Brook, they commenced work on that on the 13th. That was Monday, two days ago. And talking to Beth, she said that's going to go in fairly quickly. I stopped in yesterday, took a look at it. They still have to remove the old structure, but the new one, once they've got that clear, is just going to drop into place. Already mentioned the bollard lights. Those are up and operational and those are going to be a great asset for us. East Haddam Free Public Library is in Superior Court and we'll see. That seems to be like running a molasses that goes so slow. But hopefully we're going to get that wrapped up and be able to deal with that building. Tree removal is becoming a much bigger issue. We're talking a lot about it. At our last meeting, we empowered Public Works to go out and get quotes for tree removal, just as we do with snow plowing. We're talking now about the possibility, and this is speculation at this point, but I'm hopeful we'll move forward, of actually putting on some additional crew and acquiring equipment so we can do it ourselves. The cost of using vendors is going to go through.
I think you have to do a cost comparison of that, right? Because.
And we will.
You just said acquiring equipment. There's a cost.
We are looking into what it's going to cost, what it's going to take and how we can use these guys and what we can do with them.
Probably also a liability factor too.
Liability, there's Kirma involved, there's training involved, a lot of stuff. But for the entire state suddenly needing tree removal everywhere and very expensive tree removal, big ash tree could be $3,000 all by itself. We've been earmarking $25,000 a year. We've already pretty much gone through that this year. EverSource has pretty much gone through everything they've had allocated.
Okay, so let me just step back. So you're going to get quotes on two different ways of doing it.
May do both.
How much we, yeah, you're going to get quotes though and then present it and then also how much we need to get done in this year because obviously we don't have the, in the budget. So I'm assuming then the Board of Finance has to approve some funds to go toward it.
I've already given, I've got quite a stack of paper, that thick.
Yep.
All about what's going on, what we can expect, what's happened in other towns, what the future looks like. We're looking at it. I've given that to Builder Christopher all ready to review and alerted him to the fact that we're probably going to have a major problem. Depending on who you talk to, I've heard figures as high as $4 million for the town.
Yeah, and I don't want to speculate.
I think that's crazy.
I'm just saying, is that the, I'm asking you, is that the process?
That's the process right now. We're trying to figure out what we've got, what we're going to have to do and how do we do it? And every single town in Connecticut is going to have the same problem.
So some time ago, last month?
Yeah.
Maybe before, you talked about putting in, or all the governor, all the towns, whatever, putting together a FEMA request because of the.
Canterbury is pursuing that. My own opinion and the opinion of most people is that's unlikely. They just don't do that sort of thing. Do you know what?
Doesn't hurt to ask.
Worth asking.
Absolutely.
Absolutely worth asking because this problem is bigger than any town or any group of towns. It's massive. And you look at it with the white oaks and the white oaks are not behaving as they normally do where you've got some time, five years, six years. My opinion is that the trees have died as a result of the gypsy moss and the drought probably had issues to begin with. Weaker trees died and therefore the problems are going to develop more quickly.
Well, not to argue with it, but probably that wasn't the case, but the drought would impact them more because they tend to grow in gravelly areas, so.
They got issues.
But the, just as a suggestion that came out of the blue, a constituent suggested that maybe we could talk to loggers in the area and they have a bunch of fellers that could go along, cut the tree right off, lay it down and take it away. And on some of our roads where there's no power lines, like Early Road for example or possibly others, it might be another option. And if it was no cost to us and they get the wood and everything else, maybe it's another option we should look at, so. It's a suggestion.
We even have, and I'm not going to get into it here because I haven't really discussed it, one individual who was talking about getting some of the logs from us and making it to our benefit, very much to our benefit. That's worth pursuing too. And as far as fireworks concerned, nobody wants it.
Everybody has it.
So many fires out there that logs just lay there side of the road now. It's simply, the point is it's going to be a much larger problem. It's going to grow on us. We've got to deal with it. And all that said, I'm looking for citizens' concerns at this point. Anyone with a comment or a question out there? Phil?
I have a comment on the transfer station report, although I see that's later in the agenda. Do you want to talk now?
I'd rather we hold off on that.
Pardon?
I'd rather we hold off on that for the moment.
Okay.
Anything else? Todd?
Yes, about tree cutting. Yes, you should look at both options and whether we hire people and buy equipment, which should be quite expensive, our people equipment is very expensive and it's a dangerous work, or we hire contractors who have the equipment already, who have the experience, people know best practices and all that stuff. You should do that. I suggest you look at what the state did last year, or two years ago. As you may recall, after some ice storms and windstorms, there's a lot of trees falling on highways. So the state went out and trimmed a lot of trees and I have to drive Route 2 every day. Been doing it for a long time. And they brought in a crew, it's a four-lane highway, very busy in the morning, very busy in the afternoon and almost just as busy in the middle of the day. They hired a crew, several crews, I believe some of them were on the state with fellow ranchers and they cut trees, didn't stop the highways, didn't stop the traffic. They cut trees, right down big trees next to the highway with no danger, anybody, did it very quickly, very expeditiously. So we should ask somebody in the state who they hired and how much it cost to help you do your cost benefit basis. That's what I suggest.
Everything's worth looking at, I'll tell you. Problem is we're going to be in tremendous competition with every other town.
Well, there's other states, but these guys haul equipment from long ways. Once you get it on a truck, it's easy to keep going. And I'm sure they'll be glad to come down here, make a few bucks.
Certainly worth looking at. Anything else?
Lucas was hired out of New Hampshire.
Who?
Lucas, O U C A S. They're out of New Hampshire.
Okay. Out of New Hampshire. Sounds like a good old name.
The guys that came after the storm and were looking on our road were from Canada. And they said that we're crazy down here because up there they don't let any trees grow within 50 feet in either direction of any power lines. I didn't like that so much, but that's what he said.
Seems like we've been moving in that direction here, more than to my taste, but so be it. Anything else? Yes, Karen?
I was wondering if you could update us on the property on 613 Town Street, the Old Cheney Brook property, as to what is happening there?
Well, it's being cleaned up. You can see that. It's a Muslim organization. I believe, where are they from? From, not the Philippines, from.
They're not from the Philippines.
No, they're Indonesia, as I understand it. And I'm not fully certain of what they're going to be doing with it. They're cleaning it. I do know they wish to develop it. They're going to keep the pool, one or two of the buildings. They want to put up a mosque, I know that, and develop the property, probably very much as Johnsonville's being developed now. And.
Has it changed hands since this particular plan?
This is a new group that owns it now.
It is a new group?
This is not the group that owned it back when it was, the chickens were there.
Okay.
This is entirely separate group.
When I went on the assessors, it has not changed hands since 2003, according to the assessors.
My understanding is it's a new group that's in there from Indonesia. I can't account for that.
I think the online data is a little bit behind.
Yeah.
Because I was looking something up the other day and they hadn't updated. It was about three months, at least three months out of date, so.
That maybe it's just not been taken care of yet.
I just didn't know if it was a new group or the same group just.
Yeah. I was not in the area when they had the welcoming for the town. Apparently they put on quite a spread, food and let everybody know what they were doing.
Was that that group? Are you talking about, are you mixing those up or?
No, no. They also did it up here.
They also did it?
Tara up here did one too.
Oh. I love that.
Did they get the proper permits for the.
Jimmy is very much on top of it. I know that. I've talked to him a little bit about it and he's, I don't know if they can shoehorn everything they want onto the property they've got. So he's monitoring what they're doing and they're doing it properly with the correct permits, the whole thing.
I did see a video online of what their.
You saw a video?
Wish list would be.
I haven't seen that one. Impressive?
Very good.
You know, that's interesting. We were a resort town once and now we seem to be changing our character.
Are they exempt?
I can't even speculate on that, what might be exempt or not. If it's purely religious, it would be exempt. If it's partial, which is what I understand Johnsonville is going to be, some portion of religious, the balance, they would continue paying taxes.
As a follow-on question to that subject, I don't know if it's true or not, that's why I'm asking the question. I heard that they planned to start a Muslim school for young men. In fact, I'm told, I was told they already started one there. They used a building, used a building that's really nice, that's to the north side, behind the house. That's the building they used as their classrooms and dormitory space. But I'd like you to find out if that's true or false.
I kind of doubt it because I went by the other day and they're painting and doing renovations in it, so I don't think they're, they are having classes yet, but.
Well, is that the plan? Okay, if they're not doing it now, is that the plan? And that's a good question. Are these people going to be avoiding taxes, blocking taxes? Because it could be a religious school, I don't know.
If it's a religious school, it might be exempt.
Yeah.
If it's just a school, it's not going to be exempt. I shouldn't say that.
Does it make a difference if they're boarding?
It can still be exempt, yes.
Does it make a difference if they're boarding students there?
No, Franklin is a boarding school and it's totally exempt. As a.
No, what I meant was, are there any zoning restrictions having to do with the number of people that they're able to have there with regard to if they're bringing in 100 people they're going to live with?
As to what the structures look like and what they're zoned for. And that, we don't know at this point.
Might certainly something of interest.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Moving on. The Horizontal Curve Safety Project, matter of interest. I've got a small list here. I went through the letters that I received from people that were concerned about the signs and I'm looking for more. We're going to have a circuit rider probably late next week coming through. That's a University of Connecticut, I believe, phenomena and they got, the engineering phenomenon. They're going to go out, take a look at what we've got and see what adjustments can be made, what they can recommend. And so anyone who has an issue that would like to have them look at something, we need to be made aware of it, what you want done, and we'll bring the circuit rider out there and have them evaluate the requests. Beyond that, I'm going to be riding around the town the next couple of days when I get a chance, looking at areas. I want to go up Clark Hill and Tater Hill. I think they're remarkable in how poorly they were done. Mill Street, I know I want to drive on. The Ray Hill Road has its issues still and we're going to try to get an evaluation and see what we can justify doing.
Is Honey Hill on your list?
I'm sorry?
Is Honey Hill on your list?
If you want it to be there.
Please.
Okay. And we will look at that one, too.
How will people know that this, that you want more information before the circuit rider gets here?
I'm sorry?
How will people know that you're looking for additional information?
I just became aware of the fact that they were coming.
Okay.
And I'm announcing it here, we're going to have it posted. And I suppose we put it on Facebook, I really don't know how to use Facebook, we can put it there as well. And...
Do we have to send a letter in, or is this verbal?
Email. I'd rather have something in writing, that makes it easier to keep track of.
Would there be an opportunity for the citizens to chat with the circuit rider prior to going out?
We haven't got anything formal, we don't even know exactly when he's going to be here. He's on vacation right now, we've got a request in for Wednesday, that may or may not be honored. We have been told it will be next week, towards the latter part of the week.
Because I think if he hears from the, he or she hears from the citizens, that they may have a better idea what the issues are.
Of Coventry and, I'll say what the other town was. They've just been written up in one of the Willematic newspapers. They just got their signs and they are screaming just as we did. And they're being told by the editor of the newspaper that, well, it's for safety and just suck up and live with it. I didn't care for it very much. There it is. Okay. Anyway, moving on from there, Eastham Village Revitalization Committee, did not meet in the last month. No report from them. What is happening, I contacted Jimmy quite some time ago, and they're involved. And we're going to have to be repairing RFPs, RFQs, and decide how we're going to move forward on our property. And we need to do that. Rich Roberts has given us a sample from Simsbury, I believe, where they had a similar situation as a model for it. And we're going to be working up, how do you move forward with that? How do we get the property on the market and start figuring out where it's going to be used? And as I say, we don't have that final report yet, but as quick as we have it, we want to move. Transfer Station Committee. We have at the end of the table here, some samples. And what I did while I was away, I took some time and did a lot of thinking about transfer station. And how do we get moving on that and get, start getting it done? And what I've got, I believe both of you have that in your packages. I went through and I tried to briefly, and I wanted to keep it simple, assess what the current process is. How are we operating right now? And then establish what the goals look like. You know, the scale's manned as needed right now, certain items are exempt, they're not weighed, leaving you a lot of confusion. Stickers are already required. The key to using stickers properly is that we pay attention to them. Doesn't matter how many different kinds of stickers we got, if nobody's looking at them or checking them, they're no good, useless. And that's something I have been up there addressing, and I've been assured, they are quite intense now on stickers. It's just somebody slipped through once in a while, I'll bet you they do, but not like it happened before, and hopefully it's going to get tightened up. One of the things that's been an issue up there is picking. We've got people going down into the hoppers, up and back at the bulky waste, pulling out aluminum, pulling out brass, whatever they can find. Incredibly dangerous. If somebody gets hurt, it's going to be on our nickel, Kerma's going to be screaming. I've made it very clear up there, and I have done it in the past, I repeated it and made it even firmer. That it is absolutely forbidden for anyone to be picking except in that whatnot area we have there, where they deliberately put things for people to take away. Beyond that, we don't want people picking. And that should someone consistently refuse to behave themselves, I want to see them banned from the transfer station.
Is there any signage stating that?
Not yet, but there will be. They, they're very frustrated with it, and I made it very clear to them that I would support them one hundred percent on that. And I've thrown people myself out of there, down in the, down in the bins. I can't believe that anybody's dumb enough to go down there. And as I say, it'd be our liability if somebody does get hurt.
And they're taking away stuff that is valuable to the town.
And it's valuable.
Technically, it's theft.
You know, aluminum's got, is worth something, brass is always worth something. Iron, if they want to carry that away, it's got to be crazy, fifteen dollars a ton if that.
I mean, I believe you could probably charge them with larceny because it's not there and...
We probably could, I don't know if we're going to go quite that far at this moment.
I think if people understood that they could be charged with larceny, it might make a difference, too.
Good sign that says as much. Anyway, I set some goals for it. Make sure that any vehicle entering the transfer station has a sticker. And that needs to be enforced as strictly as we can. I think they're already moving very strongly in that direction. And then we need to identify the vehicles that need to be weighed, to make sure that they get weighed. And one of the tricks in that is stuff carrying exempt materials, cardboard, metals, whatever. We don't need everybody going over and creating a nightmare in terms of the waste station. So how do we work around that? How do we get people in there with exempt materials and make sure we weigh the ones that need it? And those are, that's one of the goals. Some of the issues that we have, we're open four days a week. We have about one hundred ninety-five days a year. We employ three attendants. When you take their time off that they're entitled to, it's something in excess of sixty-seven point two days where one of the attendants is absent. Which means we've got two attendants, which to my mind is a minimum we have to have for safety. So how are we going to make use of that resource? How do we do it? And I've gone through and I've outlined four suggestions here. We staff the scale all the time. That costs us a man. That's what, seventy-five, a hundred thousand dollars a year? It's going to cost us to have a guy sitting, weighing everything, checking every load, going up and back. We could install a kiosk ahead of the ramp and have everybody check, every sticker checked. In the case of anybody going over, being weighed, and everybody goes in over the scale, the exempt ones come out without going over the scale. In the first case. And we just check the stickers for anybody going up and back. We're going to depend on the attendance up at the hopper to check the stickers for the rest of them. We go to one with a kiosk ahead of the scale, we can check every single car coming in, look at the load, tell them which way to go and what to do. Once again, we ban that full time, it's going to cost us a man, a full man who's useless raining else. We can kind of do a hermaphrodite sort of thing, where on slow days, we just send everybody into the hopper. And have the hopper determine where it's supposed to go, the guys, the attendants up there. And when somebody needs to be weighed to come in, they go down and hand, man the scale. But just send every vehicle up to the hopper and have them checked. The last one is an automatic gate. You've got an arm, you have a special sticker now, we issued, charge a couple of bucks to get it, from the town clerk. And it's got an automatic sensor, it sees that sticker, the gate pops open, lets you go through. That works nice on slow days. On busy days, it doesn't work. We put an attendant back down there and have him checking it again with a kiosk in a protected position. Those are four options. None of these are cast in concrete, none of these are what I want to do. These are the alternatives. We have a system up there that is laid out in an awful way. If we had it all to do over, we'd have the roads running in different places, we'd have the scale in a different location, we'd rearrange everything. But we have to live with what we've got. And we have to try to make it work.
So all these solutions, just stuff you came up with, did you give them to Beth and?
Beth has looked at them, Donna's got them looking at them. They're available here for other people to look at.
Okay.
They're being reviewed right now and I am not married to any of this. Anybody who's got a better idea or a whole different approach, I'd be delighted to see it. It has to be cost effective, it has to make sense, it has to be timely. Nice little stack of them right there. And I only think we made about ten of them, so we may not have quite enough to get around, we can give, we can give more. But we have to do something about that. Key to all of this is we're checking the stickers and making sure everybody's got a sticker. Nobody gets in without it. And we're trying to determine what's exempt and what's not for the back area and handle it accordingly. We don't want to beat the stuffing out of our scale, and the more traffic there is, the more maintenance we're going to do. Very, very simple.
So if they're going to be, if they issue the stickers, they either should be putting them right on, they have to be putting them right on the car, or they have to be...
Stickers are on it now, and they do install them ourselves.
Okay, because if, for some reason they don't install it on the car, someone comes in, needs it for two vehicles, they need it on, they should have put the license plate on, let us going on or something.
Yeah, we can ask them to write that with a magic marker on it. That's easy enough.
Yeah.
But these stickers go on and they're just, they destroy themselves when you take them off, you can't remove them.
I know, I've had to.
You, you've been there, I've been there. And I have instructed them up there to get the stickers on, all the cars are legal, make sure they're legal when you do it, and check them. And they have had several intensive days, they're checking everything. I think they're doing a good job, from what I can see.
So you say nothing can be changed, that may be...
No, no, we can change, but it's going to mean repaving, it's going to be...
We understand that, but maybe in the long run, that will be the least expensive, so, I mean, so maybe look at what it would cost to move the scale. I mean, those types of things, that, anything, everything should be considered.
And absolutely, that's what I'm saying, I'm not married to any of this. I'm looking for the best solution. These are my suggestions, what I could dream up, sitting there and thinking and trying to visualize what's going on. Chop it up, rewrite it, come up with a whole new idea, nobody's going to argue with you on that. And I think in the end, we will have to redo. Let's see just what that's going to look like when it's finished, before we start rebuilding it. Because if we go and rebuild it and then discover it's going to be a little different, I don't want to rebuild it twice.
No, and if everything goes, once the commercial haulers presumably are out of there, then there's no reason for it to be copper, either.
That changes everything. That's, that's down the road.
Yeah.
What about, I'm just curious, are transfer station employees and public works employees, why aren't they like one group?
That's a question.
That can intermingle them?
We are, we are...
When you need staffing in certain places?
We are in negotiation of both contracts right now, so I really don't want to go there. That certainly is an option that we are giving thought to. It strikes me as not very productive to have two separate unions.
Is there discussion about using part-time staff or seasonal staff?
That, that becomes a union issue, you have to get their permission to do it.
Well, it could be in the negotiations.
Certainly is something we can negotiate. And if we're going to have, you have part-time, we have individuals who have some civic duty to do for one reason or another. And we certainly use them up there now. There's no reason why we can't have some part-time. Kids for the summer, maybe somebody that just comes in for the busy season, somebody comes in at Christmas. There's no reason why we shouldn't talk about that. But once again, that's a union issue.
I understand that, but is the negotiations with the, I'm not sure which union it is that's right now representing this?
You've got the Teamsters.
Teamsters are Public Works, and who's up there?
I'm trying to think what they're called.
Operating Engineers.
Operating Engineers.
Yeah.
Where are we in those negotiations? I thought I remember someone saying that, was that arbitration?
I, I don't know.
Mediation, excuse me.
It was, it was in mediation.
In mediation, one is in mediation.
Mediation.
The other has been voted down.
So...
So there you are. We're back at, I don't know if square one, but we've got a lot of work to do.
So are you pricing out each of these options, what, what's our next step? So I'm just...
I, I look at them and, you know, right now, you look at option number A, staff to scale all the time, it's the cost to the man to do it. That's the only cost.
Right, so I'm saying, so you're going to cost, you're going to price all the options out?
Yeah. The, the one item that actually represents an investment on our part, and I have checked into it, it's about ten thousand dollars to put that arm up. And that includes the sensor, the arm, some spare arms because they're going to get broken. And we'll probably have to put a little turnaround because people pull up to and it doesn't open, we're going to have to give them a way out. They can't just sit there forever. So we're going to have to let them out. And yeah, one of the questions that comes to mind there, okay, the guy's legal, he wants to get a sticker, how do we arrange for him to get a sticker? If he can't get through the gate? So, there's little subtleties there, that's going to have to be dealt with. But the point is that we're moving on this, and hopefully it's going to come together a little bit better now. And I, these, I would like to see some of this implemented fairly quickly. I think we need to do it. At the same time, and this is not quite as far along. Oh, by the way, I did close the back of it, a lot of objections, a lot of complaints. Got a write-up here from two thousand and fourteen. They pulled a body out of the hopper down in New London. Now, I mean, this does happen, it is dangerous. And I am working right now, talking with Beth, trying to figure out how we can make that backside safe again, so people can use it. And a couple ideas that we're looking at, and hopefully it's going to come around. I'd like to reopen it because it really does tie up the other side, makes a mess out of it. People come in with big loads and then they're going to deal with it. We're also looking at our citation, the whole thing. And this little stack of papers all got to do with that. And we've got a response back from our lawyer. And basically, he's rewritten the potential regulation that we'd like to put in. It's pretty much the same as it was. And what I am trying to do is to design a flow chart, it's got here somewhere. What has to happen? Like just exactly, how do you issue a ticket? What becomes the ticket, who handles what, where does it go? And what is the process? It's a fairly simple flow chart, right now it's pencil and pen. But that's pretty complete, in turn, every one of the circles that you see is an item where somebody has to do something. And we have to somehow record that, get it nailed down, make sure that if this, then that, where do we go from there? I can tell you this, we looked at packages, and we're just beginning to look at them. And we went out to Quality Data Services. They said, oh yeah, we'd be happy to, we've got a package that'll work wonders for you. And we said, well, what's it going to cost? And they had highball and lowball. Lowball was five thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars a year for a package that would do what we want. And the highball, which is perhaps more realistic, was eleven thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars a year. I don't think we're going to do any one of those. I don't think we can issue enough tickets to pay for that. We may have to develop, and I've talked to Mark Nittle about it, he's going to work with us to see what we can develop in-house, how we can do it ourselves. But this is what you're up against when you try to put this together. You've got to create that flow chart, you've got to figure out what you need for information, how do you do it? Who's going to do what? And then you've got to figure out how you're going to put together, hopefully the software, I don't want to be doing this out of a book. But that's where we're moving right now. Each of these items has its own issues, its own resolution. It'll come around, it isn't going to happen overnight.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Sleppman? I have no idea what you're talking about. Citation?
Do you remember we had talked about doing a citation where you can issue a ticket?
Oh, issue a ticket, now you're talking...
Citations are tickets.
It's a point of order.
And I'm not sure what the point of order is.
Where's the...
But forgive me.
Yeah, but...
It's a ticket. This is so the animal control officer can find someone for a noisy animal. This is so someone who litters can be fined for littering. That's a citation. But is, that's moving forward, we're looking at it. That, that basically includes, I've gone into the citation, we're looking at Munis, Quality Data there I just spoke of, and we're looking at our own IT. To just see what we can do, how we can put this together. We have got letters back, moving downward from the citation, the Control of Animal and the Trailer Ordinances. They've been looked at, we're pretty much ready to go right now, the lawyer has said, okay, yeah, you've got what you need. My thought is that we get the citation, procedure nailed down, we take all three of them to a public hearing together. There's no need for having a whole bunch of public hearings. And the citation ordinance really is necessary for either one of those to function properly. So we're gonna have to make a decision about how we want to handle that citation, what we want to do with it, and then go forward with the other two and it'll be very quick. Any questions or any thoughts on that?
At one point, we were talking about moving those along and then doing the last paragraph to include-
We could certainly do that, it's gonna be public hearings, multiple public hearings, that's all. As convenient to the public, it might be well, well to take them all together. And I can't tell you for sure just how long this is gonna take for me to put together.
Well, that, my point, that is my point, that if we want to have these in place in the near future, then we may have to look at doing two different hearings, two different meetings.
Two plus if we do it.
What's that?
We'll be two plus.
Yeah, yeah.
We won't have any penalty that we can assess through the-
Right, but at least we can start initiating.
We'll have the rules defined, but we won't have the assessment. But yeah, that's something, if we want to do it, we can go ahead and do that. I don't have, you know, the motions in front of you now to do that. You want me to do that for next time?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get that together for the next time out. Okay, and then moving on to crisis and strategic communications plans. Got some questions on that one. Okay, we laid that all out, and I've got a motion here to make it happen. One of the questions that needs to be answered is, first of all, board, I don't know who the Board of Education candidate is for that, any idea on that, Sue, or?
I have not heard back from Brian.
Okay, so we're still, perhaps we'll have to table that. What I, I did do, I talked to Ian about that, about having the police presence. And there was some discussion of having this weekdays, perhaps in the morning, and having then, you know, meeting at that point.
Correct.
Then there was discussion about meeting at night. Okay, well, if we're gonna meet during the day, you'd probably, for the police, want Jeff, Jeff Rhodes to do it.
Yep.
If we're gonna do it in the evening, it'd be Jim. And I cleared both of those with Ian, so that whichever way we're going, we had the ability to do that. But it sounds as if you're gonna be looking for Jeff to be part of that, that-
I'm, I'm looking to have it in the meeting, in the mornings.
Yeah, you want them, that's, I just wasn't real sure, I knew, I knew we had discussed both options, I wasn't sure which way we were going with it. So the only question we have, we have five candidates for it. But we don't have any idea who the Board of Education member might be, that's the one item that we need.
Well, I would just recommend pointing the chair, and then he can designate as, as-
Okay.
Isn't that who's gonna, that's who I'm calling anyways, to designate who it would be.
The motion certainly includes yourself and we certainly would be interested in appointing you as chair for it, so that'd be-
Right, no, I meant pointing the chair of, appointing the chair of the Board of Ed, and he can decide.
Leave it to his discretion, who would be in that seat.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, who else's discretion is it? Like normally, I'm calling Brian Perry anyways to say, who would you want?
Who do you want? Whomever he selects, we may or may not be in favor, and it's our decision, not his decision ultimately.
Okay, I see what you're saying, I guess I would, I was gonna, well, it's just like Bill DiChristofaro, I mean-
Yeah, that, I mean, that's a given, and we can-
Well, it's a given, because he wants to be, might not be our decision.
We know who we're voting on at that point. We, we know that we're voting on Bill, when he may, you know-
Right.
Go to approve this. If it's left to his discretion, we don't know who we're appointing.
Okay.
See what I'm saying?
Well, yep, I see what you're saying, well-
If you, I don't know, Rob, how do you feel about that? Are you willing to leave it to Brian's discretion?
We're talking about the Board of Education or the chair?
That's that one seat.
I would think that's where it would come from, so.
Right, so I mean, are we gonna vote on Bill DiChristofaro, do you want to vote on that? I mean, we could-
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion with names in these slots.
I, I understand that, so I guess my concern is, so we could say no to Bill?
We'd have to say no to the whole motion, and then we'd be looking for another candidate, if that was the reason.
The question is, how did Bill end up on it, as I guess maybe, but-
He asked to be on it, and, you know, as a Board of Finance chairman, he was the one who was gonna nominate the, the member. And he indicated he wanted it to be himself.
Well, it should be, if it's a Board of Ed representative, it should be somebody from the, that the Board of Ed nominates, I would think, for it. As opposed to appointing something-
I, I'm more than willing to do it any way you wish. I'd like to see this get moving, that's one of the things.
That's one of my issues about, you know, not bringing in all the applicants into interview, is I just want to get this moving, I want to start-
They're rolling.
And not have to wait another month to get this going.
I just want to make sure of how we're putting the names in those slots. And then we can vote on it.
Well, if you want to do, you, well, does Brian want to do it? Brian Reese?
No, no, not Brian Reese, Brian Perry.
Brian Perry, rather.
Brian Reese is on the committee.
Yeah, yeah, Brian Perry, or, I mean, I-
He hadn't decided last time I talked to him.
Well, then I guess we won't be moving forward on this right now, then. No matter what we do, so we would need an answer by the next week, by the next meeting, I would say.
I would like an answer, I mean, that's, this is why I went out to Ian, made sure of exactly where we stand with the police, because that was an open slot.
Why can't we just say that? We'll leave it to the discretion of the Board of Ed as to who they want to appoint.
And you know what? I'm more than willing, if you want to have it framed that way.
So at least we can pass the motion.
I, I'm willing to go along with that.
Okay. And I'm gonna, well, I'm gonna leave it to you to make a motion on that one.
So I went through the citizen applications. I, that, I mean, I, I'm assuming all of them, I've, I've reached out to some of them to see if they were open to doing them in the morning. I didn't talk to all of them. I was looking to have a Democrat, obviously, and a Republican. And a man and a woman. So I'm gonna fill in the slots, I guess, with, um, do you want me to do the motion, or do you want the names first, or? I was thinking Liza Bonnades and Louis Salacrop.
Item seven, G, break here.
I haven't, I-
You got it, okay.
So, is, well, hold on one second.
Yep.
So, isn't Louis already involved in other stuff in town?
Not as much as he once was, he's planning his own, that's about the only one.
That's what I thought. I was just saying it'd be better if we had someone else that maybe wasn't as involved, or, or-
He's got a lot of time.
Well, you know, I wanted someone that was a parent and someone that did not have kids in the school. That's, that was my, I wanted someone with kids in the school and with, someone without kids in the school.
And that was my sentiment as well.
That's why I-
Okay, well, I just know Louis Crowe, John Crowe, rather, excuse me, was, um-
He's a Democrat, and I-
Uh-oh, we got his Democratic.
No, but I haven't, I, I picked Liza Bonnades as a-
One and one.
As the person-
Because you were looking for each gender?
Yeah.
All I want to say is John Crowe was, is, well, has a great background, I've known him, was out of touch for many years, I didn't realize he was in town, living in town till recently, but, spent much of his career working with children and athletics. So he has a very extensive background in, from that perspective. And as you can see, he was the CIO of the Town of Clinton, and Director of Information Technology for the Clinton Board of Education, so.
And I, so, I, I pick Liza just because she has kids in the school, her kids, she says they're on all the sports teams. Has one in high school now, and middle school maybe. And hasn't really been very involved, other than the athletic, whatever the athletic program is, parents' program, so.
Well, I'm not wedded to anyone, but-
Okay. Okay, so I'd like them to make a motion to appoint myself from Board of Selectmen, Bill DiChristofaro from Board of Finance. Brian Perry is designated from Board of Ed. Ron Turner, Brian Reese. Jeff Rhodes. Louis Salacrop and Liza Bonnades. The Adha Crisis and Strategic Communications Plans Committee terms to expire upon completion of the assignment.
Just like that, Rob?
Sure, I'll take that.
And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 There you go. How you got your work cut out for you?
Yep.
And moving on to A to A, call for a town meeting. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the following call for a town meeting. The electors and citizens of the town of East Haddam, Connecticut, qualified vote in town meeting are hereby warned and notified that special town meeting will be held in the Town Hall on Town Street in the said town of East Haddam at 8:00 PM on Tuesday, August 28th, 2018, for the following purposes. To wit, item one, to consider and act upon the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance to accept a grant in the amount of $5,000 from the state of Connecticut, Department of Emergency Service and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, entitled fiscal year 2017 Emergency Management Performance Grant. Revenue account 10-542-43000. And expense account 10-541810-51510. $4,000. And 10-541810-51590 for $1,000. And second, to consider and act upon the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance to adopt the following resolution. Resolve the grant in the amount of $4,500 is hereby accepted from the state of Connecticut, State Library, for the purpose of historic document preservation and appropriated to Historic Document Preservation Fund. Account 26041-43000. That M.J. Lyman, First Selectman, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of this municipality a contract with the Connecticut State Library for Historic Document Preservation Grant. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
And any discussion?
One question, I have no problems with this, but what happened to the tanker up at Harris?
We are still awaiting their gift notice, giving us a value for it, so we can bring it to town meeting and, and get it. And they're in pay-
Because it says it was donated, and I thought until we accepted it, we're gonna be on loan.
It is on loan at this moment.
Okay.
And they've come to us saying, well, we'd like a receipt for it, so that we can get some, whatever write-off they can get off of it. And we've come back and said, until you give it to us, and we accept it, we can't give you a receipt. So, that's up in the air still at this point.
It'd be nice to include it at some point, that's all, rather than have to have another meeting for it.
We are impatient for that. And I'm moving. Anyway, any further discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
And we have some board and commission changes. There we go. I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Christopher Minor as a regular member to fill a vacancy on the recreational commission. The term expires July 1st, 2020. And Michelle Larson and Sarah Kraszewski. Kravut, Kraszewski. As a regular member to fill vacancies on the recreational community, with terms to expire July 1st, 2021. And we have a letter here from Lisa Conroy recommending that and indicating that we should do so. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. From the Commission on Aging. And we do have the minutes of their meeting confirming what I'm about to say. Minutes of July 26th, 2018, of the Commission on Aging. I'm gonna make a motion to change the status of Suzanne Busselman from an alternate member to a regular member on the Commission of Aging to fill a vacant three-year term to expire June 30th, 2020. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna make a motion to reappoint Mary Ann Klink as an alternate member for a one-year term to expire June 30th, 2019, on the Commission on Aging.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Barbara Davis to fill a vacant one-year term to expire June 30th, 2019, as an alternate member on the Commission on Aging. A second?
Second.
Second.
And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tax refunds. I'm gonna make a motion to award tax refunds in the amounts as presented. $62.04 to Toyota Lease Trust, $69.85 to Robert Johnson, $85.48 to David, David McLeed, $286.50 to Donald and Gail Sama, $182.21 to Robert Savigny, $332.03 to Vault Trust, and $2.76 to Roger McNellie. A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. How about comment now?
Um, yes, just, first of all, thank you for spending time on how I was gonna be involved in this. Just a suggestion, I actually liked option number one. But I also like your idea of having a gate, an automatic, but not, not to be used in the way that before. I, I would, I would, as a suggestion-
I, I would ask that you write it up and get it in, this is nothing concrete here. This is only a suggestion, looking for alteration.
I'm, I'm just looking to block the entrance so that they can't get up via the main road. Put a gate up there, put proximity gate, so that they go, everyone goes over the, the scale. They go up there, and when they want to get out, they have, you have a proximity thing, so the thing comes out, so that, and the people that have to get rewayed, they just go back through it again.
That's something we can work out, the details of. The wear and tear that I'm worried about, and the idea of 70 or 80,000 dollars to have a guy sitting there all the time.
Well, I, yeah. As you know, I did visit a number of the people that, that had, that had, you know, they, they all had the same issue, and they had two people. A maximum of two people, we have three, so I, I, somehow I think they can work it out.
Well, but that's something, write it up, we'll look at it, and we'll include it in the deliberations.
The other one is a, is a very brief issue, unrelated to what you talked about. To know I was at the finance meeting, and I just think that the other board member, the other selectman should be aware of this. I'm an advocate of, of providing your, the residents with correct numbers, relative, legitarian numbers. And you should be given those numbers as well, so that you know what you're voting on when you vote for them. I became, I asked one question, because I believe in the separation, the separation of the, the school board budget and the school, separation of the town board budget. I believe that there, there is, there's, that they're not separated enough. Okay, and I believe that there's intermingling of funds, which, which generally is not a good thing. I asked a question. The Board of Education, it's wonderful that you were able to move them- The Board of Education, it's wonderful that you were able to move them into this building. And I know that in the past, they had a rented building that cost them $50,000 a year. So I asked the question of, of the Board of Finance along with the Finance Director and Evan as well. And I said, how much rent are they paying now? Being a salesperson, I know not to talk. It was probably the longest 10 seconds in the world. And then Cindy came in and said, they're not paying anything. To me, to me, they're, that, that means their budget that they submitted to you this year just didn't, wasn't the true budget. There was a budget less $50,000 that they should have been paying you.
Interesting comment. We don't have any authority over the Board of Ed whatsoever. So.
There's a lot of people that work for you. You, you as, as group selectmen deserve to know what money you're spending and what you're spending it for. Okay? In this case, I believe that you were given incorrect information and you need to at least be aware of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anything else, Todd?
Yes, I have, I think, five questions and one comment. First question regards a circuit rider. Circuit riders coming to town, I guess those folks who left. But who is the decision maker? The circuit rider comes to town.
He doesn't make a decision. He recommends. He's an engineer who's able to evaluate. But you've got, and offer us recommendations. And Beth, I'm correct on that, am I not?
He's just, works for the Teacher Center out of Yukon and he's just an advisor.
Okay, who's he advised?
He advises towns on, decisions on safety.
So the town is the decision maker? He listens to the recommendation, he says yank it, sign goes? That's, that's significant.
Well, if he says any sign goes.
Yeah, if he advises that sign doesn't need to be there, you can yank it.
We have some basis for their ever claim against us for having removed it.
Those folks left too early. That's good news. That's a lot different.
I mean, that's, that was why we've been trying to get the circuit rider. If we go out and take them down, we do it at our own recognizance. If he comes in and makes a recommendation and we follow it, we say we had a professional look at it and this was his opinion. Takes a big difference.
Take, take them through at night.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
I, I would like to drive them through at night and be blinded by some of those signs.
Totally practical. Why some curves in town don't have any and the other curves are plastered. But they're mild of each other. It doesn't make any sense at all.
I didn't design this system.
Well, that's, I take that as good news. That's very interesting. Okay, the next set of questions regards the transfer station. And I'll first ask about the stickers. What is the term of validation for the sticker? How good are these? How long are the stickers good for?
Sure, was that a year or two years or is it indefinitely?
They don't expire.
They don't expire.
So they're indec, so I thought, because I have one on my truck and I don't see any date at all, so it's good that I own the truck. I keep a truck all the time, that's for sure. I let the truck in. So, okay. Next question is, in a transfer station, where is, I've got to be careful on the side of the job here. Where is the money being lost or wastefully spent? I heard big numbers from the report committee.
No, it's very hard. There are good numbers that came out of that report. How accurate they are, I can't vouch for.
The reason I'm asking that question is that that's where we should spend our time and our efforts. If you spend on the incremental stuff on the side, not making much, not getting a big bang for the buck. You've got to be careful of that. And that leads to my next question, Matt's point. I participated in a lot of management courses. In fact, I went on exercise when I learned and saved up the money for the company that I work for. One thing you learn right up front, and incremental improvements only work in a long-term plan. If you start with incremental improvements, you can end up for certain, unless you're lucky, wasting a lot of time and money. And you've got to undo what's good before and it's going to be small stuff. So what I see here in this list is some good ideas, but they're incremental. I think we have a much bigger problem at transfer stations. So I, I think you need to lay out a long-term plan.
I, I think that's what he generated for us. But you've got to do it a chunk at a time.
You got, well, you got to lay it out on a piece of paper and then look at what you can do to achieve, to kill the bleeding. And, and then along the way, do your incremental stuff, but have a goal to reach so you don't undo or create a bigger mess later on. It's extremely important and many companies have learned this the hard way, but last as long as man's been on this earth. So my next question comes to, I'm a little confused, I must admit, is what happened to the recommendations of the transfer committee? I thought they were pretty clear. Yeah, they, nothing's ever 100% accurate, but once you get into stuff. But I thought they laid out some pretty good framework for both the short-term, low-hanging fruit and long-term. And for example, I'm here, we lost, we lose a lot of money because the commercial haulers are dumping for free and we pay the bill. And I think maybe that should stop right away. So, but I didn't hear that said in here. So my question is, what happened to the recommendation of the, of the committee?
We're there and we're in the process.
Well, I get.
Unless you can put together a big committee to make them all happen tomorrow, it's going to have to be.
I know it can't happen tomorrow. In fact, I said that two months ago to you, to this very soon. But, but I think you may be careful on the site of where we want to go because a lot of money can be saved here fairly quickly, I think. The next question, the next point I want to make, and it's a point of support. I fully agree that the back gate needs to be operational because I think we've got a worse situation now than we had before. We've got a lot of congestion on the, on the one gate side. God forbid anybody gets hurt. So I think, very simply, make the back gate the same as the front gate. With the plywood panel up. Maybe put a barrier so trucks can't back up so close to the gate so they don't push their tailgate through it. They don't want, you can do that. But I think that could happen fairly quickly.
You're talking about at the back hopper?
Yes, the back hopper, backside of the hopper.
I can't do that because you have to accommodate the commercial haulers.
Well, there you go. So that's the other problem. That's exactly right.
That's why it's.
So you've got to make, that's why talking incremental improvements, like right, right away, we shut down the back gate. And it's hurting people. I get, as I told you, I get earfuls when I go up there for people politely. But they're concerned and they have good points. But that's why, this is an example of why incremental improvements don't work. Because you're actually making a problem worse. And the big problem is, is the commercial haulers. You've got to make a decision. Are you going to keep them or are you going to lose them? Because right now, they're causing us a problem financially and safety and capacity of the, of the hopper. That's my point. And I'm saying, I know the job is difficult. It's big. I'm just telling you, this is things you got to do. And I think the committee did a great job getting the ball rolling. And I don't see the link, frankly, Emmett, I don't see, I haven't read your document yet, but listening to people talk, I don't see the link between what the committee did and what you got here.
This is the bulky ways up and back.
This was one.
That's what I'm addressing.
One of the three major, there are three major areas of savings, Todd. One of them was bulky ways. This was an attempt to go and throw out, how do you go and do that? The other, the other two ways of saving had the, did the use of a vehicle to do your own hauling. And then the third way was the elimination of the, of the carters. Okay? And, and the, that, those, those were the three big things. If you add those totals up, you probably come up with about a quarter of a million dollars. So, I mean, I, I looked, I complimented Emmett for doing this. I've been critical and I hope you know, it's not a personal thing. But I understand that these are great things. I do think, and I have mentioned to you, I think you need to go and review this with your attorney. I believe that a case can be made that you're making a direct, you're directly subsidizing commercial interests by allowing the carters to come in here.
Been there repeatedly.
And I, and I, I've, I'm concerned that you haven't moved on this. And I think that linking this, since you are taking an incremental approach to this rather than accepting everything at one time, then I think you should look at all of these matters incrementally. But I, I do believe that you need to take a careful look at that because I plan on trying to find out that myself.
Well, one more comment I make. The Essex Station, which I drive by occasionally, I go down to Calamaries. It's fairly small, but it's fairly neat. And things move smoothly through there. I didn't see any fancy gates. I just saw a smooth run in operation. And maybe they know something we don't know. You can use them for, for guidance. And other, other transfer stations as well. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Hang on. Bill?
I assume I have a comment on the transfer station. As you know, I've asked a couple times about one of the figures in your report about savings. If we insource the function, insource the function of transferring to Willman. And it's been published now twice and said a number of times that the savings would be 100%. I've asked several times to see how that number was derived, but I haven't, haven't received anything. But I did have a nice talk with Beth Lund. And Beth clarified that the $108,000 is not really savings. It's what our cost was last year. So if, if that was our cost last year, that tells me, we, we don't know what would be the insource of the function. And I'm not saying insourcing would be wrong. Clearly, if we got, if the, if the commercial haulers didn't use our facility, that right there would probably cut the bill 50, 60%. But I, I do think it's important for we move ahead with a decision on insourcing or outsourcing to really understand what the cost would be if we did it ourselves. We need, perhaps we'd have to hire a driver? You've got to amortize a truck. You've got costs of fuel and maintenance. And what would the cost of insurance be? And once you have that number, in my opinion, what you want to do is you'd want to do an assessment of your savings relatively to the liability you're assuming. Because I think it could be huge. What's our savings relative to the assumed liability? So that, that's really all. I just wanted to get that on the record. That, that number is probably last year's.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My understanding is we're just about the only town that does allow commercial haulers to dump here.
Either we're the last or the last two.
Yeah, well, why was that instituted in the first place and why do we allow it to continue?
That was how it was created back in the 70s. And it is in our ordinances that they are permitted to do it. And it's going to take a town meeting to remove them. And hopefully, that's going to take place.
Is that one of the scheduled items coming up on the next town meeting?
It's not on the town meeting.
Why not? If, if that's what it's going to take to change the ordinance, it seems to me it should be listed.
Experience indicates that we need a hauler's cooperation to make that happen. I think we have that if we adopt the bag system. We still have the lawyer out on that one. We've got answers on much of the rest of what we have. We don't have an answer on that one as to whether or not we can implement it.
So you're saying that they will only go along with it if we go to the bag system?
They want that bag system.
Yeah, but the town has the right to decide based on the town's people's vote whether or not we're going to continue to subsidize commercial haulers. Why should we have to pound cow to what they want when it's the town's decision and it's the town's money, the taxpayers that are paying the, the bill for their dumping here? It does not make sense to me from a common sense point of view. Especially if only one other town is still doing it besides us.
There is a middle ground here, which I haven't pursued a whole lot. But, you know, I came to one of these meetings and I was hoping that we would move quicker on some of these things. And I, fortunately, when I, when I chaired that committee, I should have read the ordinance, which I did not. And so they use the ordinance as a reason for not moving anything. Or at least that's how I perceived it, so I read the ordinance. And then when I read the ordinance, I re, I realized that these three people, these three selectmen have the exclusive and sole right to make the rules and regulations concerning the transfer station. And what, and it also gives them the right to set the fees for how we dispose and who pays for whatever it is. So though the ordinance says and gives the right, gives the right to carters to, to come here, come into the thing and use it, the current fee structure for them to pay is zero. They do, of course, they have to be licensed to pay a $250 fee. They could, they could go and have a motion tonight. They could have a motion tonight that says, we have to go and put a, a thing in the East Avenue's giving them a certain date and time. And, and actually, in the ordinance, it tells them how much they are allowed to charge. And the amount that they're allowed to charge is the amount that it costs us to get rid of it. Which is currently, I believe, 60? Beth is better saying this than I am. I believe it's $60 to $70 per ton for the tipping fees and approximately $10 per ton for the transportation of those, of the garbage to Willman. And then I would think that it would be reasonable and it couldn't be challenged that there might be a 10, 20 to 30% surcharge on that for the upkeep of the dump.
Yeah.
So that, that would be the middle ground, which would allow them to use the dump and conform and, and, so that, so that they would be in conformance with the ordinance. Yet at the same time, I feel very strongly that that's something that you should be doing. Okay? Simply because I do believe it's a direct subsidy to them. And if you did not, and you said, well, they provide lower fees. I've given you documentary information that I checked on fees and that they really are not giving, the local companies do not give a large discount to people. And that's something that the three of you need to, to take a very careful look at. Okay? I, I think there's this whole area of subsidizing private business with town funds is something that's difficult. And I don't buy the area that, that they're paying for a service to transport native big. And frankly, I don't use a carter and I don't see why I have to go and subsidize people that do use a carter. So those, those are the two issues here that you need to go and take a look at. And someone can go and explain to me why I should subsidize something else or why all the town residents should go. And I, I'd like to make, the car, as you know, that the carters are good people. I'm not looking to hurt them. That's not the point here. It's what right, is what is right? It's the people's money that are being, in my opinion, squandered here. And it's, it's not your fault. It's, it's gone on for a long time. But some, but some, sometimes you, you just can't do business as usual and sometimes it's time to make change.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying that. That's all the more reason why I find that it's absolutely absurd that you haven't acted on this particular portion of it first and foremost. I mean, it, it, you should tell us something that none of the other towns are operating this way. So why are we being so backwards? And, and as Bill pointed out, we are literally, the taxpayers are subsidizing the businesses. Now, I have nothing against their businesses, but they should be paying the minimum of what it costs the town.
First of all, it's not.
And a little extra to cover what you're saying that we're in here.
The carters that he's talking about are hauling household waste.
But that, they still get.
From citizens of the town.
Yes, but.
So let's not, not call it businesses. Let's call it what it is.
It, it is, it is a business. They are charging for their services. So if it means that they would have to increase their charges, so be it. It's very unfair for the people that are trucking off to the dump all the time on their own to be paying out in their taxes to cover the extra cost that the people who are using the carters are, are incurring. It just, it doesn't make common sense. You, you guys need to do the math. If it's, if it's costing us $70 a ton plus $10 a ton tipping. If it's, if it's costing us seventy dollars a ton plus ten dollars a ton tipping fee, that's eighty dollars a ton, and we're charging them nothing? I'm sorry, that's, that really does not make any sense. And I would highly recommend that this issue be addressed first and foremost before any of the other dump issues. And I think his solution is good. If you don't wanna tell the haulers that they can't dump here, then make them pay their own way. It's a simple solution.
Enough. We've beaten this one to death. I think we've got enough. We've got what we need, okay? Anyone else? Yes?
I'd like to make a comment about the transfer station. There's nothing to do with what everybody's been talking about. Eric was up at the transfer station this past week and was talking to someone up there and made a comment about the appearance of it. It needs to be mowed and weed whacked. And I understand there's three guys there, they're busy, especially in the summer, a lot of times, there's two guys there, they're busy, we can't keep up with our lawn right now. So we were sent to him, "Why don't you guys have community service kids mowing weed whack? It's community services, at least they could do." He was told that they don't do that anymore because a kid did community service, mowing weed whacked all day, went home, cried to his mom about how hard he had to work that day, and she called the selectmen, complained to him, "I do not believe it was you."
It certainly wasn't me.
And that puts that to it. If my kid at community service came home and complained about how hard he had to work because he did something wrong, I would say, "Take him another day." Not Paul, and now it's eliminated and these kids aren't even working for community service? I mean, make them do something. So I don't know if this is one hundred percent true or not, but that's just crazy.
I'll take what I'm familiar with.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have to agree with her comments. If you go to other transfer stations, they're neat and clean. I know our folks up there have been doing some painting and they're, when they have time available, but the simple thing of cutting the grass would make it look a whole lot sharper. And, and I think that's a great idea and have it done for community service, it'd be better. So I, I fully support what she had to say.
Okay. Ed, you had your hand up for a while.
No, we beat it to death.
Okay.
Any else?
Apparently, there are no community service people in our books that work. There aren't any kids signed up for it, so.
Our resources are there. Hey, um, self新的discussion?
It's okay, go on.
So regarding the subsidizing, that should be answered. That's a question I've had for quite some time. I think this needs to be put to the attorney or whomever we wish to have this addressed because it is probably illegal for us to be doing that. So if that is the case, then we need to address it immediately. The other thing is, the savings that we had, or were anticipating in the operation of the transfer station, I think were reflected in the budget. So if we're not addressing some of this stuff, it's costing us money and there's gonna be issues with our budgets. So it's, I think it's important that we address and move along on some of this stuff. So whether, as Bob, as Mr. Morris has pointed out, that, you know, these things are in our purview with the statute, I mean, excuse me, with our regulation and ordinance. So that, it's time to move this along a little bit faster, is what I'm saying. And it'd be nice to get an answer on the subsidizing because that would resolve many issues.
Yes.
That's all I've got right now.
What's that?
Yeah.
We can wait. I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn. And can I get a second on that?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
You're saying I wanna do it?
At eight and three to seven.
Who seconded that?
I did.
I'll schedule something for next Wednesday.
I'm, I feel bad that you.